Alright, council and staff, I'm gonna start bringing people into the room. We don't quite have everyone yet, but as they come in, I'll bring them in. Council, Councilman Weatherspoon is having some trouble logging in. I'm gonna try to walk him through that. Other than that, you have everyone on. So if you want to begin caucus, I don't see any issue that why couldn't.
Hello, everybody. You can hear me good. Any comments for the good of the order here on the caucus?
Yeah. Michael Key, I did have a question about the ordinance, about the clubs and the, particularly the one where it says that they're gonna not serve or not have alcohol. And I just wonder how that's gonna work. How do we have bottle clubs, you can't bring a bottle? It seems like it's contrary to, you know, what would actually be going on in these places. So something to bring to council that we could be with this new amendment to it, you know, writing people out of business.
Well, this is Ed Betsa. Two, two things. One, there's, there's really two ordinances that go hand in hand. The first one was to make sure that these facilities are safe. And that ordinance has passed. And that ordinance requires that the properties, any bottle club or after-hours club would be inspected. And so I think that protects the safety. The second was zoning. Council has indicated a desire to keep those types of clubs primarily away from residential districts. So that's really what this does. If the city has a number of existing bars, the corner bar, and some existing clubs, the ordinance, when it changes upon enaction, will not, will not alter those businesses. If you are a lawful, this is a zoning amendment. And so if you're a lawfully existing business, you're not gonna be prohibited from continuing to operate. But a new business could not say, hey, I wanna move into a residential district. They would not be able to do that. Now, Mr. Key, you're talking about serving alcohol. There's a distinction. The service of alcohol is regulated by the state.
Right, not the service.
Correct, so.
It says, the one that's on our agenda today about not having alcohol in particular.
Well, you're not able to serve alcohol
Right.
under any scenario unless you are regulated by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
Correct. But it says prohibit the alcohol. I believe that's what the ordinance says.
I'm not sure what provision you're referring to. I'm pulling it up.
Okay, I'll, I'll find it and get back to you. It was on our agenda at last council meeting, so it should be on for second reading today.
Right.
Counsel, just a little housekeeping on my end. If you can remember to mute and unmute yourselves, so we don't get that echo, that would be fantastic. Thank you very much.
Mr. Betsa, right at the end of number one on our agenda, the very last sign, very last sentence is zoning ordinance to prevent alcoholic beverages of the zoning order. Okay, I got it. They're putting it in context. It's just weird.
Yeah, I, I have the ordinance pulled up. There's, what this ordinance does, I wanted to make sure I spoke accurately, is it regulates specifically where these businesses can be located. And they're referred to as after-hours club and dance club. And they are permitted in the central business district and the heavy manufacturing district.
Okay.
And as a conditional use in waterfront, commercial, and light manufacturing. And so all it's, all it's doing is pulling it away from the residential districts. Again, if they currently exist in a residential district, they're not prohibited from continuing to operate. It's just that we're not having new ones come in because of the problems with blending those two types of uses together.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
No, you bet. Thank you.
Yeah, so Ed's having some technical difficulty. Is there anything anyone else wanted to talk about? Maybe the letter we got from the parking authority?
I'll be reporting later in the meeting in my committee report. But we have a meeting scheduled for 2:30 today, and I'll kind of go into detail later about that meeting purpose. But we did speak to the parking authority, Renee, and sent an email to confirm that information was needed, and we're gonna be reviewing that at the meeting this afternoon. And then I'll report back, but the meeting's at 2:30. We'll try to sort out, again, nothing is finalized yet, it's still in discussion. And we're just trying to collect information and make sure we have all the data in front of us and who's doing what. So as soon as we have it clarified, we'll report back to council and make sure everyone knows what's going on and what could be proposed or could be agreed upon.
Thank you.
I think with that being said, David, we were going to also talk during our finance meeting after our council meeting this morning and talk directly to our finance director and see how these numbers fit in and what is his opinion on what was presented to us at this point.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, the more discussion, the better. Again, we'll be reviewing that later also, but if we wanna have questions, that's good.
I would like to know how my colleagues feel about the code of civility that was emailed to us and how we want to move on from that.
I don't know, could barely hear you.
She was referring to the training for council. And my personal opinion is that we're gonna get three new council members, you know, at the end of the year. I think it is valuable training, but I think it's be more prudent to wait till we have the new council. And, you know, I suppose training people that aren't gonna be here.
Kathy, I support the training. I think Michael has a good point, but I think one of the things we could learn by going through this training is how to replicate it. Do we bring the same trainer back next year? Do we do it in-house? The concept I always liked, and having participated in three of them when I was at the newspaper, you know, train the trainer sessions. The idea is that you get a group that's trained and then they can actually do the training themselves or mentor the new people. We will still have people on council who, who still have their terms. Mel had suggested that possibly we could do it in conjunction with another board, but I don't know if Mel heard anything back from that. I thought that also could be a viable idea. It's not a lot of money. We do have money in our budget, and I think once we start to do some training for ourselves, then we build on that training, not only with the civility training, but what else do we need to do to, for continuing education for council members? So I, I support it, Kathy.
Yeah, I, excuse me, I also support it. I've been through that type of training with Pennalec and with the State Audit General and became a trainer. It's very good. It's definitely needed. The idea of waiting for the new folks, I don't disagree with it. But if we can move forward with it now, and so those of us who are here could, again, mentor, assign an individual, a new member with us, and it's, it's no, no harm in getting it trained over and over and over again. I, I think it's a good one. I looked at the information, the training package. It was right on point, and I support the training.
Kathy, I also support it. Although my term will be ended this year, I'm not re-running. I'm gonna continue to hopefully serve on more boards and authorities in the future. I hope to keep serving our city, so I would hope to keep representing the citizens in some way. And I think the training would be good, as has been cited here. Thank you.
Ed Betsa, could you explain how we would move from there? Does that have to go to a vote?
Councilwoman Shaw, you're very difficult to hear. I'm gonna ask you that you take your microphone and put it into your mask on your headphones there.
While she's doing that, I was able to hear the question, and it was how, what's the procedure to implement the training? Would it need to, would it require a vote of council? And ultimately, it would. I think you would need to identify the training that you would wish to participate in and approve it by a majority vote of council. Most likely, hopefully, we could get it donated, but most likely, you're looking at some type of cost that's being incurred, and that would require a majority vote of council to authorize the expenditure of that money.
Ed, we already have a proposal that Kathy has received that has an estimated cost. It was somewhere a little bit above the $2,000 range. So I think it's not above that threshold where you have to go out and I would think get bids. If there is such a threshold, I think there is a threshold. And it's somebody who has done training in Pittsburgh of a similar nature. So Kathy has taken the initiative on this. Done a really good job in outlining what she sees as our needs and then having a proposal in hand. So just wanted to let you know, but I can't remember the exact number. Kathy will be able to say that when her microphone is working better, I think.
Ms. Allen, when that did trigger a memory, I did see a proposal that is under the threshold, there would be no objection if council wished to proceed. They could authorize the expenditure of that money and move forward.
Thanks, Ed.
Does anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Anything that anyone else would like to discuss?
Ed Betsa, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you much better.
Yeah.
Hello.
Michael, I was gonna ask if there's any more discussion on the goals and priorities? We were going to have some type of future discussion on that, or if that's still being... We were going to have some type of future discussion on that or if that's still being reviewed?
It's still under review. We should have we'll look at the schedule later today and try and art something out. If there's something in particular you wanted to discuss, we could probably put that to the top of the list.
Yeah, nothing in particular, just I think everyone had a good list and if we could focus on those and start determining how we're going to go about focusing on those priorities, that'd be great. So, thank you.
Right. Well, Mr. Brennan said he's going to have a meeting with the Parking Authority today and so after that, I think it would be appropriate. So, Mr. Brennan, Ms. Shaw would like, and some others would like, a study session with the Parking Authority. So I guess we're pending your meeting later today. Could you get back with us? If they come to something that they need to present or we would like to be, you know, in the works where, you know, we don't get it last, you know, where whatever's coming out that we are completely informed.
I'll put that on the agenda today, that request, and I'll get back to you on a we'll get a date set up, but I'll let the group know and the Parking Authority, of course, know.
Thank you.
Councilman Brennan, you have a high pitched squeal on your end. I'm not entirely sure why. It sounds like maybe your computer fan or something.
Yeah, I'll put my headphones on.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Jim, are you able to, are you the person who is appointing someone to the Water Authority?
Yeah. Renee just sent me some.
You're on mute.
Yes, I am and it was just yesterday Renee sent me some of the applications or the resumes for the appointment to be made.
We're going to give this about two more minutes and then we're going to get started. There may be an echo in the room. We're going to the President's going to use my microphone in order to be heard and so that's just something we're going to have to work through on the front part of this meeting.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the meditation and prayer.
Michael, you want to begin with the prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this time for this council to come and we just ask for your guidance. We ask for your presence to be in the chambers with us, that you lead us, you guide us, that we make prudent decisions for this city. And we just thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge?
Pledge?
A pledge of allegiance.
Approval of the minutes from March, or February 17th, 2021 and bills for payment on 3/5 and March 12. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Citizens to be heard. I don't have any repository sales.
Okay, the first citizen to be heard is Mr. Art Leopold.
Hello, my name is Art Leopold, 53, 41, Apple Grove Lane, Erie, PA. Thank you, honored councilmen and esteemed councilwomen, valued administration members and citizens. I speak today reminding you of the need for community benefit agreements to help lift marginalized community members with fair wages, equal opportunities for jobs and preferences for local hiring. Also, I am in favor of a civilian police review board to fortify a fair policing process and help review and update police use of force practices to bolster trust in the EPD. My main concern today is about the planned IRG plant to be located on the Lower East Side, less than a mile from the now shattered Erie Coke plant in a designated environmental justice area. Briefly, it is to be a plastic recycling and flaking operation that is 10 times larger than any other, receiving plastics waste from a 750 mile radius in the volume of 250,000 tons to 5 million tons annually. With its main client, a steel company just a lake barge away in Canada. There are many unknowns about the plant and its processing operation. We have little real information other than the marketing materials to draw from. Here are my asks from City Council. Please support and sponsor a series of public informational meetings for the neighbors and community to ask questions and get answers with the IRG reps being present. Please insist that some of the local stakeholders and neighbors be at the table while the business and plant details are being formalized to make sure that their interests are considered and there is a fair and open process. Third, please make sure that the IRG ownership is held accountable for its operation. Should a fire happen at the plant, which is pretty common with plastic recycling plants? Should a spill occur in the lake when barging contaminated plastic waste flakes over to Canada? Or it just happens to shut down? We need accountability. Now is the time to prepare. Now is the time to ask questions and to get answers for our citizens in our city. Thank you.
Anne McCarthy?
Thank you. This is Anne McCarthy. First, I want to recognize as my address that we are meeting and living on the traditional lands of the Nishinabi, the indigenous people of the Great Lakes region who continue to care for and honor this land and water. My current residential address is in Harbor Creek. My ministry office is 345 East 9th Street in Erie and I'm speaking on behalf of Benedictines for Peace. Thank you for giving me time this morning and for your work. In Erie and around the globe, we are preparing to celebrate Earth Day. We recognize that there's a climate emergency and acknowledge the crisis point that human behavior has brought us to as a global community. We have a choice. We can choose to continue on the path of increased carbon emissions, overconsumption and increased global scorching, which will trigger feedback loops, increasing the speed of environmental degradation. We know that this path radically alters or threatens human life in the future. Or we can urgently shift and choose a new path, a still doable path focused on renewable energy, regeneration of human community and the earth, circular processes and systems with zero waste, which could keep global warming in a difficult but acceptable range. And this decade that we're living in is the crisis point, the decision point for changing our behavior. We know that. The solutions are global, we know that, but they are also incredibly local. For the shift that we all desire for the future, we need to consider before every decision locally, will this action increase or decrease our carbon footprint? Does this action increase or decrease our reliance on fossil fuel? Does this action perpetuate overconsumption or is it regenerative? Does this action build up or harm our human community, especially for the most vulnerable? These questions are especially important when we're considering new infrastructure and experimental new processes. Therefore, Benedictines for Peace has grave concerns about the International Recycling Group's plans for a new massive plastic shredding and processing plant in Erie, which will receive unrecyclable plastic from a huge area, shred it into flaked plastic and ship it across the lake to be burned in steel production. Our concerns, it increases the reliance on fossil fuel. Plastics are fossil fuel. It increases our carbon emissions at every step of the process from transporting from a huge area from processing and then burning in Canada. It increases toxic waste from the burning process, which is in our watershed. Toxins will reach us in the air, water and rain. It increases overconsumption and reliance on plastic because it gives the illusion that plastics can be recycled when they, so they're okay. The plastics this plant will deal with cannot be sustainably recycled. There are dangers from spills, accidents from plastics flakes escaping into water, soil and air. There are potential dangers from fires. Plastic storage facilities are at increased risk for fires, which would endanger the life of workers, firefighters, neighbors, both from the fire and from the toxins that plastic fires release into the air. This is an environmental justice designated area. There are potential threats to our tourism-based economy from increased plastics and toxin pollution in the lake and soil. There's a potential that if this plant closes, as several of them have in the country, Erie would be stuck with tons of unrecyclable plastic that we have no idea what to do with. Bottom line, we question this is whether our infrastructure and new experimental process we want and that we want to support in our community. We're asking for a community forum, that you host a community forum to discuss this proposed plant in the heart of our city. We request the inclusion of the voices of all stakeholders impacted by this proposed plastic shredding plant, including youth. And it is important that the questions include preparing for any, any potential outcomes for this and asking IRG to set aside monies to cover that. Thank you.
Juan Lorena? Juan, there is a microphone button at the bottom left-hand corner of your screen. If you tap that, you will unmute yourself. I'll give you 30 seconds to unmute yourself. If not, then we will come back to you and try to make it work again.
Oh, my apologies. I'm Juan Jardina from 920 Beaumont Avenue, Mill Creek, PA, but I volunteer at Presque Isle, at Erie's, our water, our air rights and other organizations in the city of Erie. So I see firsthand the plastic pollution in our parks and waterways. During the last several months, I've been researching the business of plastic recycling. So today I am presenting three of my worries about the proposed International Recycling Group's recycling plant at the former Hammermill site. I'm worried about, A, the plastic pollution from the proposed plant, that it will further harm Lake Erie, our bay and its connected waterways. The microplastics that will further contaminate the air we breathe, the damage to the land, wildlife and our already plastic infected food chain. I'm worried for the health and welfare of us Erieites, especially the workforce at the proposed plant, the neighboring businesses and the residents who live nearby. These residents live in an environmental, social justice neighborhood and deserve to be heard. Number three, I'm concerned this proposed plant will move Erie's economy backwards rather than forward. I want more manufacturing in Erie and its related businesses, but we need to listen to our scientists, children and grandchildren. It is evident that we have to move away from fossil fuels to protect our climate and protect Erie's most important gift and asset, our Great Lake. We need to encourage green manufacturing and tax, not subsidize fossil fuels like plastic. The term "plastic recycling" is a broken record that the fossil fuel industry uses every time the public raises its voice against single-use plastics. This has been happening every decade since the 1970s. The fossil fuel plastic industry always says, and I paraphrase, "We hear your concerns and we can fix this with the most advanced recycling plant in the world." And here we go again, International Recycling Group saying the same thing to the Erie community. Let's remember the wise old saying, "If it sounds too good to be true, it is too good to be true." Let's move forward and improve our economy and not risk it with a business plan that is doomed to fail like all the rest of the most advanced recycling plants in the U.S. and in the world. So I respectfully request two things from you, our council members. Please hold public meetings where we can all talk about the proposed recycling plant. And let's continue to explore green businesses for this. And let's continue to explore green businesses for this important lake industrial site. Thank you for listening, and may we all make good and wise decisions for our beloved city of Erie.
Okay. Sorry, Laurie.
Izzy Laurie?
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Izzy Laurie. I live at two-two-six Mellon Avenue, Girard. And I wish to express my concerns about the proposed plastic sorting plant to be constructed by IRG on the old Hammermill site on East Sixth Street. And when I first heard the proposal to bring two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand tons of plastic waste into our city, it just boggled my mind. It brought, it brought to mind the pictures that we have seen of the plastic waste that we sent to China to be recycled. And now China doesn't want to do that anymore. It brought to mind those pictures of that plastic waste and those people wading through that plastic waste. And, and to think of that plastic waste not going to China now, but to coming to our fair city, it just didn't sit well with me. Connected to, to bringing this huge quantity from this, this huge number of miles, seven-hundred-and-fifty-mile radius that would include New York City and Atlanta, to bring this huge quantity of waste to our city would mean extra increased truck traffic. IRG estimates fifty semi-trailers a day. Maybe there'll be more. But of course, once we have increased truck traffic, there'll be increased noise pollution, increased air pollution. There'll be, there'll be increased road deterioration. And then there's safety concerns. There's children and adults, they're walking, they're bicycling, they're going to school, there's school buses. And this is a dense, densely populated neighborhood. I have a concern with these trucks coming in. And then if you think of the bigger picture, these trucks coming from seven-hundred-and-fifty miles, that's a huge carbon footprint. It's not only in our city, but it's, it's coming from all over the eastern seaboard. We're, we're increasing our, our carbon footprint. When we are living in a time of climate crisis, we should be looking at reducing our carbon footprint, not increasing it. Now, IRG are proposing to wash and flake plastic so it can be burned in steel mills in Canada. But emissions from those steel mills are going to come back in our direction. It's only forty miles from us. Like this Duran said, it's in the same watershed. This is our, our lake, our drinking water. I'm speaking today as a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church. And our first principle is that we support and promote the worth and dignity of every person. And, and that, that brings a concern about the worth and dignity of the people that live in the area on East Sixth Street. As it's already been said, and you know, this is an environmental justice area, environmental justice areas. Historically, they've been exposed to more industry and more pollution. And this is maybe a time where we could improve the environmental justice area, not add another industry there. So I think as well that if we had a community meeting where details can be explained to community members, questions can be answered, and community members could have a place at the table and, and could be part of decision-making as to what goes into the community. We all need to work together to make our community a better place, make our city a better place. I thank you for the work you do for our city, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And last is Andrea Stomack.
Hey, good morning. So the, the hot topic seems to be about bringing up a plastic sorting plant into our city. And I'd just like to echo the people who spoke before me. I mean, we are, all of the water in our world is connected, and we are on a great lake. I'm sure you know, as well as anybody that lives in Erie. And I don't know if you've been to the Presque Isle in the last year or so, but the sand is eroding, the beaches are getting ruined, and they are full of litter. Litter overall is a huge problem here in Erie. I mean, if you walk down around Tops West Side, Twenty-Sixth Street, Bauer Avenue, there's trash from one end to the other, from Green Garden all the way to Washington. I think that's a really big problem. And the brain drain here in Erie, as, as people my age, I'm in my thirties, educated people can't find jobs. Let me just be the first to tell you this industry, a plastic sorting, it's not, those aren't the jobs that we want. We don't want to contribute to ruining our lake. And it's unfortunate because I see people my age, and we're leaving in record numbers. The rent situation here in Erie is a drastic mess. I'm looking for an apartment right now, and it is unreasonable what these landlords are doing to us. I need you guys, City Council, to be aware of this. It's a crime. Is it crime that they're asking first-last security deposit, two-hundred bucks for a pet for two moldy bedrooms? It's a crime. I don't know what's going on here, and they're ticketing people and their own properties. I thought that they used to give warnings before they would put a citation on your car for not moving it. I really need somebody to address that. My friend had a car that he wasn't driving because he's working from home in his own driveway, and it was covered in snow because he's not driving it. And he was ticketed and told that he had to prove that it wasn't abandoned in his own driveway. I don't know what's up with that, but I got a lot of gripes with the city right now. And as we go forward, and we have three city council seats, I hope that you guys will start listening to us dearly and drastically. We're, we're trying out here, there's activists trying to bring awareness to the pollution problems and the social justice and the redlining that continues to happen in our city. We just keep trying to drive the poor and brown people further and further away. But those poor and brown people provide the tax base that Mill Creek so generously enjoys. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and go, you guys have a nice day.
Andrea, can I have your address?
For sure, it's two-three-one-three Haybarger Avenue.
Council, that concludes public comment.
Hey, Laurie.
Okay, we can move on to ordinances for first reading. Council File Number sixteen-two-oh-six, Official File Ordinance eleven-twenty-twenty-one, Amending Official Ordinance Number eighty-twenty-oh-five, and Amendments thereto, codified under Part thirteen, Article thirteen-oh-three, zoning code of the codified ordinances of the City of Erie, Pennsylvania, Article six of the zoning ordinance by amending the definitions of the terms "bottle club", "commercial recreation and eating and drinking establishment", defining the terms "after-hours clubs" and "dance club", identifying the zoning districts in which these business entities can be located, and amending Article three, Section three-oh-five-point-two-five of the zoning ordinance to prohibit alcoholic beverages. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Council File Bill Number sixteen-two-oh-six, and now known as Official File Ordinance eleven-twenty-twenty-one, be finally passed by City Council. City Council passes Official File Ordinance eleven-twenty-twenty-one by seven yays, zero nays. Council File Number sixteen-two-oh-seven, Official File Ordinance Number twelve-twenty-twenty-one, amending the City of Erie zoning ordinance, Ordinance Number eighty-twenty-oh-five, by amending Article six definitions to include new definitions and amending Article seven, historic resource protection in its entirety. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mrs. Shaw, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number sixteen-two-oh-seven, and now known as Official File Ordinance twelve-twenty-twenty-one, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance twelve-twenty-twenty-one by seven yays, nays, zero. Council File Number sixteen-two-oh-eight, Official Ordinance Number thirteen-twenty-twenty-one, amending the codified ordinances of the City of Erie, Part One Administrative Code, Title seven, Employment Provisions, Pensions, Article one-forty-nine, Firefighters Pension Fund by amending, I gave myself a lot of town, by amending Section one-forty-nine-point-one, one, one-forty-nine-point-oh-one FF regarding the purchase of prior military service specifically to eliminate the prohibition of such a purchase if there has been a purchase for the same period in another plan. Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen, the Council File Number sixteen-two-oh-eight, and now known as Official File Ordinance thirteen-twenty-twenty-one, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance thirteen-twenty-twenty-one by yays, seven, nays, zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number sixteen-two-oh-nine, An Ordnance Appropriating the Sum of forty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received for the Pennalex Sustainable Energy Fund, twenty-five thousand dollars, and the Pennsylvania Energy Development Authority Restart Grant, twenty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, and providing for the expenditure thereof for the purchase and installation of a solar photovoltaic system for the central fire station. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys, the Council File Ordinance Number sixteen-two-oh-nine, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number sixteen-two-oh-nine by yays, seven, zero nays on first reading. Council File Number sixteen-two-ten, An Ordnance Amending Article three-thirty, Landlord and Rental by Removing Section three-thirty-point-twelve, Sunset Provision in its entirety. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the Council File Ordinance Number sixteen-two-ten, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance sixteen-two-ten by yays, seven, nays, zero on first reading. If this takes us to new business.
Any calls for remainder? We have, we need a second to move the balance. Mr. Keys. And Mr. Witherspoon. Third.
Any separations?
Any separations, folks?
This is gonna be a record.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to move the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Renarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Motion passes seven-zero. This takes us to committee reports.
Committee report. Let's start with Mr. Witherspoon today.
No reports, sir.
Okay, that was good. After Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Renarski. Can I hear a dog? Can I hear an okay?
No committee reports this morning. Just look forward to our finance meeting following our council meeting this morning to start getting to some of the water lease prepayment monies on how we're gonna utilize that, what's our best procedure and policy. As I've said from the beginning, this is only one time we can do this, so we gotta do it right. But other than that, that's all I have for this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renarski, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the Water Authority meeting that was on Zoom. And they are always very proactive in taking care of the water stations around the city of Erie. And they are working hard to make sure that we have safe drinking water. I always have been impressed with the runnings of their operation. And the authority works very hard with the questions and making sure that the Water Authority or the water treatment plant is up and safely running. I want to give a shout-out to the Erie Arts and Culture. I listened to a webinar of an artist in Jacksonville, Florida, and how he talked with the people about finding their niche in the art world. I also listened to a webinar on the impacts and challenges facing the Great Lakes region. And that was informative session. Was made me knowledgeable about the Great Lakes and the pollution. I also attended and designed the Red Line with Ms. Allen that hopefully is coming to our city soon. And I want to thank all of the ministries that helped the homeless last Saturday. We were outside the room and even, it was really, really, really cold out. But we were able to pass out lunches and bags of things, essentials, that the homeless and the people who are in need could pick out scarves and socks and keep them warm. So I myself, like Dave Brennan, had mentioned that he is not running, but would like to continue to serve our city. And I wish to do the same. That is why I think that, that code of civility for us would be, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle. It goes to Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. In reference to the historic preservation zoning amendment and creation of the historic review commission that we passed today, I just wanted to report to council that we had a productive meeting yesterday with the residents of Garden Court Neighborhood. That's the neighborhood near Six and Cherry, West Six and Cherry. Their, their questions were discussed, because I know they did email me and a couple others listed questions. We clarified all other questions and discussed some of the issues that they had. And a lot of them were just kind of what the intent was of what we're doing. And some of the questions will be on the future agenda of the new HRC board that is, has just been, that will be created. Kathy Rostick, and that's Melinda Meyer, and I attended. And hopefully, actually, I know it's similar discussions with neighborhood residents will take place in the future regarding these issues. I just want to thank the mayor and council for creating the task force for your continued support of these historic preservation initiatives. You guys, as was discussed prior, a lot of work has been done. I wanted to also thank the administration, the task force, and everyone who contributed to the effort. As we discussed earlier and before the meeting and caucus, Erie Parking Authority for the municipal agreement discussions, we did meet. I was attending a meeting with administration a few weeks ago for brainstorming the session. And really, in the meeting, we resolved that we needed further information to really properly review what was being proposed. So Renee had emailed Chris Friday of the Parking Authority with several questions that, that we need clarification on. You know, some of them, I won't go through all of them, but you know, who's currently doing what, how much revenue is being brought in, and so forth, expenses, enforcement. But I, as Mr. Keys presented earlier, I will add a council study session to the agenda so that they know that we want to have a council study session to review these items before, before anything goes further. So we are having this meeting today with the Parking Authority, and I'll be attending that meeting, and we could get that scheduled, that study session when we can. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. With that Parking Authority study session, uh, get it in writing, let us know. The three folks that look at it will set a date and we'll let you know what's going on. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
And Ms. Ellen?
Uh, yes, uh, David Brennan, Kathy Schoff and I met with two Erie residents via Zoom to talk about proposed changes to our urban agricultural, agriculture ordinance that would allow the growing season to be extended. We are compiling information, um, from other municipalities and actually from the state of Pennsylvania as well. And we'll meet with these residents again before presenting to the full city council. Our goal is to have some possible changes in place to extend the growing season for twenty twenty one. And this meeting grew out of the groundwork, uh, USA workshop, uh, Kathy and I attended a few weeks ago, which shows the value of community collaboration. So there could be some lessons there going forward. Since we had a number of residents talking about the proposed, uh, plastics recycling plant, I think it would be good for us to figure out what is city council's role, what is the city's role and how do you, um, work on communicating what's been proposed there and, uh, you know, bringing people to the table. I have no uh, opinion one way or the other, but, um, I know we'll have to do our research on that. And just talking about, uh, urban agriculture, coincidentally, I'm working on a story for the Erie Reader about, uh, the taste of Italy in Erie and I found some stories I wrote in nineteen eighty eight about Little Italy. And, uh, this was looking back decades ago and it was really interesting to read. Not only did individuals have their own gardens, but there are actually forms of community gardens where people were able to get fresh food. And of course, there were a lot of, markets and, and corner stores in, in each neighborhood that served the needs of people who need, uh, fresh produce. So anyhow, it's kind of fun and informative for my own, uh, knowledge to go back and read what I, what I wrote. What, almost, uh, thirty years ago, more than thirty years ago. Along the same line of community or citizen resident involvement, I had heard from a number of Erie residents about problems with snow covered sidewalks. I'm sure my council colleagues also heard about that. And also about blocked intersections. Now, you know, luckily the sun has come out, most of the snow is gone. But I, I came across it firsthand when I went on a couple of walks. I, it's hard to believe, I think it was just last week when we had a lot of snow and it was difficult to, um, see or even climb up sort of a small mountain to cross it, uh, cross, uh, streets, even where there are commercial enterprises. So I had suggested to these residents or these citizens that maybe we could also do a small Zoom with, with them as sort of a ad hoc committee to brainstorm some ideas for the next winter season. I don't think it can all be, well, let's do code enforcement about this. There are elderly residents and Erie's a snowy place. It piles up and it's, it's hard to keep up with. But I, um, on a separate Zoom, I, I, a, a social Zoom, I heard from a friend in Milwaukee about her neighborhood where there's a man who volunteers to repair old snow blowers and then he gives them away to people who will say, yes, in exchange for getting a free snow blower, I am going to also do my block, clean the, the sidewalks in my block. So I think there might be some ideas we can think about for, uh, next season to marshal our, our forces together to help keep sidewalks cleared because we know the snow isn't going to go away. Speaking of Zoom, David and I participated in some Zoom interviews with applicants for some open board positions. And I've said this a number of times, but a big kudos to Renee and to Kathy Rosdeck for following through on our resolution to open up appointments to boards and authorities. And we interviewed interested, dynamic, qualified and diverse applicants and I was glad to hear, uh, Jim Winarsky say he was looking at those applications for the Water Authority. Um, we're, we're really moving forward in trying to, um, you know, recruit, um, the, the best applicants for these jobs. They're volunteer positions. They take a lot of commitment and we, uh, we're, we're going to be able to do this. So we had a great model with, uh, these interviews that David and I participated in. We still have one more to do, so we aren't ready yet to. But there should be some names on the, uh, our next agenda for that. Um, I also wanted to thank Frank Spermila for organizing the Zoom training that we had. Being able to go through that Zoom training is what really has, um, I've, I've done Zoom. I do it with, you know, family and friends. But being able to do it, um, for the city, uh, to initiate some Zooms, to be able to see the faces of citizens who have, um, concerns they want to bring to the table is really important. Monday is, uh, Women, International Women's Day and the theme is choose to challenge. There's going to be an event in Perry Square, I believe it's from four to six PM. I think I'm speaking at five twenty PM. Finally, um, a lot of us, uh, well, we had the study session last week on CDBG funding. I sat through the morning public hearing on Monday and I, I just want, uh, people in Erie to know that this is a really good process, the way this works in terms of bringing city council in for, uh, to, to keep us updated on this. We're invited to listen to the actual presentations by, uh, grant applicants. Then we have a study session, then there's the public hearing. Uh, so I just wanted to thank the city for following this process. We've done it in years past, but it's always, I think, informative to learn about where those federal dollars are being requested and, and where they, will eventually be disseminated. That's all.
Ms. Ellen, when you wrote your articles, did you write any on the grapes in Little Italy?
Yes, I did.
When I was a sanitary engineer, I used to help get rid of the grapes in those neighborhoods, spread back some real fun memories. Thank you very much. Vice President Keys?
Well, I have, uh, no report today. I'm just happy to be here.
Yeah, I'm happy to have you with us. All right, and, uh, I guess I can speak for a couple of minutes. Pretty good in the order. I'd like to hear your thoughts on the idea of having one meeting a month in June and July, maybe at the middle of the month. Rather than having two meetings for the sake of having two meetings. I want to get the input from, from the mayor and everybody else, of course, but, uh, a lot of other agencies and, uh, councils do that in the summertime. Uh, there's usually less going on. I know we have bills to pay and things like that. When there was an emergency, we could always have a lunchtime meeting quickly and pass things that would have to be done in an emergency fashion. Just for the good of the order, I throw that out. And then I have a request. The library's open, I think. The county courthouse is open, Mr. Mayor?
I just add that library opens, they open on Monday, the county, just so you know, it's not open yet.
Thank you. All right. Planning to open. Thank you.
Yes.
If it is too dangerous in everybody's minds to open city hall to everybody, the general public, maybe we can just open it to the people who work here, get them all in here together. I, these people are working so hard and I keep on sensing a frustration because of some people working at home, some people taking turns coming into the office. Uh, we're getting the job done, but there's a lot of things that slip through the fingertips and, uh, every place else, I guess, uh, it don't get done because we don't have that person to person communication. I would like to see something like that done. Of course, the mayor is the one who makes that decision. If we were in Texas, we'd be a hundred percent wide open, right? What are you laughing at, Ellen? What are you giggling for? I can't hear.
My husband was just walking through, that's all. Nothing, nothing about you. I'm sorry.
How's his hip doing?
Multitasking.
His hip's doing good? Anyway, that's what I have. Let's, uh, go to the administration, I think. Did I miss anybody first? Council's good, okay. Uh, Rennie or Kathy, are you on? No, they're not on. Okay, uh, Mr. Besse.
Did you want?
Oh, hi, Ren.
Hello.
Are you the mayor this morning? I, I caught Heck the other day because I had him on first. I thought he'd given an honor.
I attend the morning meetings and the mayor attends the evening meetings, so.
Smart man. Okay.
Just, uh, I have about four things to report on. In terms of, um, authorities, boards and commissions, I just wanted to pick up on, on, uh, what Ms. Allen commented on and, and Mr. Brennan, we've, we've, um, really been enjoying the interviews that we've been doing for the authorities, boards and commissions. The people who have come in have been energized and passionate about serving, excited to use their skills and their talents and abilities to help move the city forward. Um, and, and very interested in the specific, um, organizations that they've applied to serve on. It's been a very moving inspirational experience doing those interviews. Um, I have uploaded, um, spreadsheets of all the applications that were submitted, uh, to the Google Drive. As Mr. Winarsky mentioned, I did send him yesterday the applications that we received for the Water Authority. If anybody else, I, um, I mean, you can access the Google Drive where I can send you, I can email you things directly, but I don't know who's appointing to which authorities, boards and commissions. So feel free to shoot me a text or an email and I'd be happy to send you the applications and resumes that we received. It's, it's really been a wonderful process. Just to reiterate, uh, Mr. Brennan, we are meeting with the, um, internally to discuss the Parking Authority recommendation, uh, today at two thirty. Um, once we have a chance to look at all that, then we'll have more information to share, but until we really have an opportunity to kind of crunch the numbers and who's doing what is, as, as Mr. Brennan mentioned there, you know, we need to do that first before we can have a study session. Wanted to mention, uh, in honor of Black History Month on, on, uh, Saturday, several of us were at a ribbon cutting. Uh, the mayor, uh, Mr. Outlaw, Ms. Allen and Mr. Witherspoon, uh, for triple D's, uh, in the Liberty Plaza. It was a very moving, uh, ribbon cutting ceremony and, uh, they opened on Monday, in the Liberty Plaza in the Old Peggy's Diner and, uh, they have a great menu. I highly recommend it. Burgers, shrimp and grits, fries, uh, wings, lots of different kinds of wings, breakfast. So, um, I commend that to everybody. And then as well during Black History Month, there were two other black owned businesses that opened in the Liberty Plaza in February. Uh, the Truth Clothing Store on February twentieth and Materialistic Boutique on February sixth. So those, those are some really exciting success stories and I hope that people will, will go and, and check them out and support them. Also, uh, of course, as, as Ms. Allen commented, uh, March first kicked off Women's History Month as we did with Black History Month on social media. We will, we will be showcasing, uh, women locally and across the nation who have made, uh, powerful impacts around our communities. And so we encourage people to look for that. In terms of the reopening, we've been working diligently on that. Um, as I think you know, uh, we've been, we had been working with SMRC Security Company to provide, um, proposal to us. Since receiving that, uh, draft and then the final draft and reviewing it, we've brought in, uh, a slew of experts in the field that would actually be installing. We're not only looking at COVID protections, but also security protections. Uh, once they came in and realized our situation here, they made a lot of recommendations in terms of metal detectors, X-ray machines, cameras, visitor management, um, access control panels, um, software upgrades and these kinds of things. So we need to get that kind of stuff in place. Um, in addition, uh, looking at security guards for the entrance as well. And we've talked to the sheriff's department, also talked to independent private security firms. So the quotes are coming in for that. Once we have the quotes, which should be very soon, and once we have, the timeline, then we'll, we'll know more. We don't want to rush it. We want to do it right. We don't want to miss anything. We want to make sure we have accurate quotes. So we've really been doing our due diligence. I want to thank, um, Dave Mulvihill and Chuck Zisk for all the work that they've done on that. And, uh, hopefully we will know soon, but we don't want to put anybody in the building or anybody coming into the building at risk. We don't have any precautions that are set up right now for COVID or for security. And, uh, so we just want to, we want to make sure that we're doing it right. Everything, all of our services can be done online as opposed to, you know, we don't have any courthouses within the city, so we don't really have a need for people to have to come in to city hall. We will open as soon as we can, um, as safely as we can. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Ren. I almost forgot, Reece, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, the, uh, aggregate board did meet for the fourth quarter, uh, performance for the pension funds and, um, they actually did pretty well. They finished a little bit above what the estimated return was. The aggregate boards finished at ten and a half percent and the water reserve was at twelve percent return. So, um, that continues to grow. Uh, we recommended no changes. We're just going to monitor the funds at this point in time. And, um, we're going to have another quarterly meeting. It'll probably be in May coming up. I don't know if it's going to be a Zoom or if we're actually going to be able to get together or not. Not sure about that. But as of today, the funds, uh, have closed at three hundred and fifty two million dollars. So it's grown quite a bit over time. So I have the, the books. I believe Lori has the copies in her office also. So if anybody has any questions, just let me know.
Thank you.
President Brzezinski?
Yeah.
This is Kathy. I do have one thing to, to share with the council if that's okay. Um, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Just real quick. Given the, some of the comments that were made earlier today about, and I think it was in response to the webinar that was held on the plastics, uh, issue and, and Great Lakes that was held on March first. I received an invitation to that webinar and when I did, I noticed that IRG was not on the panel list for that, for a discussion. I then reached out to the organizers of the webinar and asked that IRG be invited to participate in that discussion and, and invited to be a panelist. I was told by the organizers that that, uh, was not appropriate and that they would not have IRG as a panel. I thought it was a better approach to have both sides of the issue on a panel discussing it i- in public and, uh, for some reason it was denied. Uh, so I just wanted to make you aware that that attempt was made. Um, we've had many conversations with the representative of IRG Mitch Hecht. And he has multiple times said he was willing, would like to be invited to the webinars and the discussions, the forums that have been held in the past and has never had an opportunity to do that. So I think this is probably for further discussion, but just wanted this council to be made aware that that attempt was made and it was denied by the organizers. That's all I had, council member or president.
Thank you very much. I know, I would be remiss. I have two other little things. One of them, I got to give a real that a boy to whoever singled out Mr. Cooley, probably the finest gentleman that I've ever met as a, uh, brown man, I guess we'd say the best way, uh, as basically a quiet leader in our city. He ran an exterminating business for years, raised a wonderful family and he's just one great guy. So I just wanted to make sure people knew that, uh, if you see Mr. Cooley, don't just give him one day. He deserves a lot more than that because he did a great job. And the reason I asked about maybe opening up city hall, I have bumped into a few people who are running for office, our office here in city council. So when I asked them to give me the names of the people on council, they couldn't do it. We need to somehow inform the folks who are running. They all have good intents, but if they don't know what the business is all about, it's going to be a learning process whoever gets in. But, uh, I'd like to have a situation where maybe we would, if any people running for council want to, we can get together six feet apart, whatever, and go over what, uh, we just sent the rules of council to all of our present members for review and that was the biggest reason for it. So that we're all on the same page as to what we're doing and what we should be doing. You know, you can come in with a hundred and fifty five beautiful ideas, but if you don't have four people in the backing of the administration to get the thing done, it's not going to get done. So the bottom line is, uh, if we're going to bring in new people, which it looks like we have to, uh, let's see if we can get them educated. Anybody, any council members out there, if you want to call the city clerk's office and leave your name and number, uh, I'll talk to the other folks on council. Maybe we can get together and, and have a little, little talk. I think it would be beneficial to everybody, both we here on council and the folks that are out there pounding the pavement trying to get elected. I think that's all I have now. I just want to make sure.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Witherspoon.
Uh, I want to thank, uh, Kathy for that updated information. I want to thank Kathy for that updated information. You know, folks want to, want to be at the table at the beginning when things take place. And that was the opportunity for them to be at the table to get the answers that they asked for this morning. And that was turned down. So I don't know what the problem is. Thank you, sir.
Very good point, Mr. Witherspoon. Very good point. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, let's take a 10-minute break and then we'll have our finance meeting. Okay, say goodnight.
City Council adjourn at 10:00 AM. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Key, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winerzki, and Mr. Witherspoon.
Councilwoman Schaff, since I think you're the only one in chambers, can you get the rest of council so we can get started here?
Right, I tapped on the window. Ed is still on his interview, but should be ending shortly. We're sitting down now.
Kath, everybody here? Mr. Mayor on?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Well, Kath, I'll let you run the whole meeting.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor Joe, for being here with us today, and we're going to begin with your proposal. And after that, we're going to have Paul Lichtenwater talk to us about uh, our revenues and expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. I hope everybody can hear me okay. And, uh, I'm really honored to be with you today. I can tell you, my team and I have worked really hard on this presentation. I did also send all of you a copy of it, uh, late yesterday afternoon or early evening, so, uh, you should have that to look at. And Frank will also be showing some of the numbers as I talk about them right in the very beginning here. What we tried to do, we've worked hard, and my whole team, including Paul Victor Walter, Renee, Kathy Schoff, and Frank, who are on this call. Everybody had a lot of input into this, and we, we tried to do it in language easy to understand and also present things as clearly as possible. So, the first thing I want to kind of explain is how all the numbers have worked, uh, and, and what we're proposing we do with, with the balance left. So, uh, we have, uh, received, uh, forty-year lease prepayment, which you see on the top line there, of ninety-five point seven million dollars from the water authority. They also paid points at closing, which they always do whenever we extend their lease. And they paid us two and a half million in points. So, we received a total of ninety-eight point two million dollars. And the purpose of this is really to solve one of the city's three major financial problems, which I'll talk more about later. Here's the funds, the next, uh, slide will show you the funds that, uh, have already been used. Uh, I think that might be the third slide, uh, Frank, rather than the... Okay, yeah, th- this is the, uh, funds that are already used. We replaced the twenty-twenty, uh, we had a tax lien sale in the twenty-twenty budget, and as you'll recall, because you voted on it. We, instead of doing that, we used two and a half million dollars of the water authority money. I'm hearing music. Okay. So, we, we used two and a half million dollars, and over the next five years, that will save the city four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because when we do a tax lien sale, we don't get the full amount. It's discounted, and there's fees that come out of it. So, by doing that, we, uh, saved almost a half a million dollars over the next five years for the city's budget. We also asked you to approve two million dollars for, uh, Chris Groner in his business development fund. And you did that. Uh, the, what we're trying to do there is we're trying to get into a mode where we're bringing more businesses and people to Erie, and we'll talk more about that, uh, a little later in this as well. Uh, we, we don't just want to keep cutting things, we want to start growing again, uh, like we, like it was, uh, sixty years ago here in Erie, and probably for the last fifty years, we've been shrinking in population as well as in, uh, uh, income, uh, and that, that is key for us to turn around. You also approved moving fifteen million into the general fund budget for any shortages over the next couple of years in, uh, in the city's budget. That way, we don't have to increase taxes, and you'll see that, uh, in some detail in one of the, uh, in one of the handouts that I sent to you as well. That leaves seventy-eight point seven million dollars that, from what we received from the water authority. And today, what we're proposing is that we use that seventy-eight point seven million dollars to pay down, uh, it would be a little over half of the city's debt burden. Uh, and you'll see the results of that a- as we work through this. Uh, so the, the total amount that's still available to balance the budget in the years ahead is fifteen million dollars. And we believe that will last at least five more years. Uh, so, uh, we should, we should not, you know, our, our goal, and obviously, none of us know what's gonna happen tomorrow, let alone six, twelve, eighteen months down the road. Uh, but given conservative assumptions, we think that we have got a good chance of that fifteen million dollars lasting at least five years. Uh, especially based on what happened in twenty-twenty. When we really, almost to the very end, we expected a three and a half million dollar deficit in twenty-twenty, and it ended up being right around a half a million dollars. So, it was three million dollars less than we expected. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future. I'm hoping we have similar results, though, going forward. Uh, so, here's the actions that we're take, that we're taking to, and I just want to review Erie's three major financial problems, uh, with you, that PFM Group had identified for us, and we are actually already knew what they were, I think all of us did, but... So, three years ago, the city was facing three major financial problems, and here they are, the pension problem, the structural deficit, and the debt problem. PFM Group, again, confirmed those three and recommended we address them as quickly as possible. And they did that in their five-year financial management plan that I think all of you have seen and we've talked about before. So, you helped to solve the first major debt problem when you passed the twenty-twenty budget uh, by making our interest rate assumptions in the city's pension plan realistic. What that accomplished is it stopped the one to two million dollar per year increase in costs from our, for our pension funds. And you can see that in the attached ten-year budget forecast, which we can look at in some detail later as well, if you'd like. Uh, pension costs are stable now until twenty-twenty-nine, according to conservative forecasts. And what happens in twenty-twenty-nine is our pension costs drop four point seven million dollars per year going forward from there. Uh, again, we're taking a long-term view of things, uh, you know, no, no matter what happens in elections, I will be mayor in twenty-twenty-nine. But I know that's a good thing for Erie, and I want, you know, that's what we're trying to do, what's best for Erie in the long term. So, we're working to address the, the, the second, the city's personnel costs. They go up at about more than ten times the rate of the city's revenue. So, we've begun by reducing annual employee salary increases. It, it had been three percent for many, many years. Uh, w- we still have two more unions to negotiate this year and next year. But we'll try to reduce salary increases there as well. You know, with the, the, uh, non-union staff, uh, two years ago, we implemented, uh, a zero percent increase in year one, one percent year two, one and a half year three, and two in year four. Firefighters also agreed to that. We, we got reductions in the police department agreement, and they did other things in, in, in their agreement also to save the city money. So, we're really working, uh, the next thing we, we're talking about doing, we haven't talked to you about this yet, and we haven't, you know, presented an, an implementation plan for it. But we want to reduce city benefits. Uh, and we could, we could talk, we'll talk to you more about that when we, when we're prepared to present it to you. So, the, the problem, though, that we're really discussing today is the debt problem, which is the city's third major financial problem. And the city's put off addressing this for the last thirty years. Uh, the problem is, we've got this huge debt load that, over time, we've kept pushing and pushing into the future. So, our plan is to reduce that huge debt load, and that's what we're discussing with you today. If we can achieve this, it's a major step towards no tax increase for five years, and I want to be clear, I can't guarantee there'll be no tax increase for five years. But again, y- as you'll see in one of the attachments, what we're proposing here, uh, based on very conservative assumptions, in terms of wh- what revenue is going, uh, we believe we'll be able to do five years, but of course, I never would have predicted the pandemic that occurred last year, and it's still, uh, you know, a, a big concern to most of us. Uh, so, we're, we're trying to be careful not to promise anything that we can absolutely deliver. So, here's what the prepayment we're proposing today to you to consider. I- i- here's what it accomplishes. That seventy-eight point seven million dollars will pay down the debt. It, it will reduce city expenses for principal and interest. Remember, we're putting in seventy-eight point seven, as you can see. It reduces our payments by over eighty-six million dollars over the next nineteen years, what we have to pay. So, we're, we're paying eighty-six million less over the next nineteen years if we pay down that seventy-eight point seven million. On average, take that, uh, eighty-six million and divide it by nineteen years, which is how long our debt goes out. We will save over, on average, four and a half million dollars in loan payment expenses every year for the next nineteen years. We've pushed most of these savings now into the first five years to give us more time to grow the population and the jobs and economy here in Erie. That's the reason we've done that. And as you can see in that general fund ten-year forecast, this heavy payment upfront allows us to have a balanced budget for the next five years. There will, should be no need for real estate or income tax increase for the next five years. Again, assuming all our assumptions are correct and nothing unusual happens. The earliest, according to that projection, would be, uh, twenty-twenty-six, when we may have to consider a real estate or income tax increase. And again, what we're really gonna be doing during this window of opportunity we have is, is working to bring more jobs, businesses, and people into Erie. We really want to increase revenue as the long-term solution beyond five years. That general ten-year forecast, again, as I said before, is very conservative, it does not include either any kind of increase in revenue, uh, you know, beyond what's normal, uh, when there's no tax increases or anything. So, we, w- we, Paul has, i- i- has really put together a, a good ten-year forecast that's very conservative. It doesn't assume there's any more people living in Erie paying taxes, doesn't assume there's any more businesses in Erie paying taxes. Uh, w- we are working to decrease expenses and increase income. And our focus is now shifting more to increasing income if you approve what we're asking you to do today. My team and I are really working hard to bring more jobs and people to Erie. That's our long-term strategy, and we, we can discuss that with you further. We've been working hard on it, and, uh, we're prepared to do that if you want to talk about it further. So, what we're asking you to approve today, it's, this is a summary of everything I've just said, is we're asking you to approve that we move seventy-eight point seven million dollars into a fund that will only be used to pay down debt. It may not all be paid down immediately, because there's some prepay- payment penalties that we don't want to pay on some of it. But i- i- I think it'll be over, y- you can see that in the other attachment, when, actually, when the debt gets paid down. And some of it is even more than five years out, but we're trying to pay it down when there's no prepayment penalty. And those funds will be earning an interest rate, it's relatively small, but there will be a interest going into the fund, uh, as we wait to pay down the debt. So, your approval of this payment of the city debt is a, a major step towards our goal of no proper property or real estate tax increases in Erie for at least the next five years. Again, does it guarantee it? Absolutely not. But it's a major step in the right direction, and we're gonna continue to work on bringing more revenue. Uh, will we assess this every year in terms of where we are? We'll talk with you about it often, probably at your finance committee meetings. And we'll continue working hard to increase city revenue by bringing more jobs and people back to Erie, which will be our major emphasis going forward. Uh, if, y- y- you all have a copy of what I just presented, and I elaborated a little bit more than what's written there. Uh, and you also all have copies of, of the two, uh, handouts. Uh, the one is the ten-year forecast, so you can see on that, uh, if you're looking at, for instance, on the, uh, expense side, you can see our pension costs, and for instance, how that actually goes down over six hundred thousand dollars in the twenty-twenty-two budget, but then it goes up, uh, about six, seven hundred thousand in the twenty-twenty-three. And you see, it goes up and down. Then, and if you look over at twenty-twenty-nine and twenty-thirty, twenty-twenty-nine, you can see it's that, over that four million dollars down. That's where we finally catch up with what's happened over the last thirty years with putting us, having unrealistic assumptions i- in that. Uh, and the other handout, I'll just talk about briefly, it shows you exactly what debt is being paid off, you know, across this, it shows you the series, the year it was issued, and how much is being placed on that. And you can see we have debt payments going out to actually twenty-thirty-two. Uh, s- so, uh, again, my team and I are, are committed to, long-term, to, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here in terms of not just paying down debt and reducing expenses, but our emphasis over the, over the next, uh, years, however long we're in office, will continue to be by bringing more people and jobs to Erie. Uh, working with Chris Groner and his group, uh, Jennifer Hoffman and what she's doing, for instance, with Kiva and that sort of thing. We will, tha- that, that is our focus. Uh, and that kind of concludes everything I, I wanted to present to you. So, at this point, Kathy, if it's okay, we can open it for any questions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for that presentation. My fellow colleagues, do you have any questions?
I have one, Kathy, uh, Mr. Mayor. When did we approve that fifteen million?
I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Neither can I, that's why I'm asking.
Really?
I don't remember doing that, unless it happened before I was here.
My team told me that, so...
Okay, well, I don't, I'm not calling anybody untrustworthy.
And if, if it's not, I'll tell you this, if it's not true, we'll come to you and ask you to do it.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Okay, the fifteen million dollars for future budgets was, uh, through ordinance the council passed on December second.
What ye- what year was that, Paul?
Uh, twenty-twenty, a couple of months back, three months ago.
Okay.
Yeah, we appropriated, if you, um, you know, and Lori could pull this out for everybody, but we appropriated the cash, and the way we divvied it up at that point in time was we were gonna use, as the mayor said, three and a half million dollars fund balance two thousand twenty. Uh, we restricted fund balance restricted future use, two thousand twenty-one, two million nine thousand, blah, 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 for twenty-one. And then we fund balance restricted future uses twenty-two and on, um, nine million and change for those future years, two million dollars for the business development fund, and then the, uh, seventy-eight million dollars was invested into the, what we set up as the fund balance restricted water reserve investment account, seventy-eight, almost seventy-nine million dollars, which is the money we're gonna use to escrow to pay off future debt. So, yeah, it was December second.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Paul and the mayor, um, I, I wanted to say that I thought that explanation, I, I had actually emailed the mayor last night, and I said I really appreciated the, the explanation, because I thought you did it in lay terms. Um, so, I just want to make sure, you know, we knew that, re- remember, there were a couple of, I don't know if you call them stumbles along the way, but about the, you know, prepayment penalties, you know, how that money could be invested, so I just want to make sure we've, we've addressed those. And then, um, it, it really isn't, I am really, um, pleased that you've put the issues on the table in terms of, you know, benefits and the long-term, uh, w- way that, that, you know, expenses, um, for, for, uh, salaries, uh, you know, are far exceeding our revenues, so I think that that's, I'm really glad, because I had asked about that any number of times, so I'm glad we're getting to that thorny but solvable issue. So, just make sure that we understand about the, you know, the prepayment and, and how the money is going to be kept safe, because we had fewer options for where to put it. And then, I think my third question would be, did you need to consult with, um, an outside group to come up with this plan? Um, I, I told Kathy Schoff, I said I had to run upstairs to get the budget for twenty-twenty-one, the final budget. And if you'll recall, I kept saying, yes, but what about the projected deficit for? I think it was twenty-twenty-four and beyond, so it, um, i- it's so, I think, uh, I'm happy to see that those numbers have been reworked, so prepayment, how we're investing, and did you need to consult with any group to come up with this, um, very detailed plan? Three questions. So, I don't know if it's the mayor or Paul or both could maybe just go through that, and some of that is just to, um, m- make sure that, you know, for this, for any residents who are watching this too, that they understand. And I guess for us too, because, you know, uh, financing is, it's a complicated topic, and we know that it's been complicated. And I guess for us too, because, you know, financing is, it's a complicated topic and we know that it's been complicated for for what we did, but it right now it looks like a really, really prudent plan to me.
Thank you. Let me, Paul, let me just answer the second, second question and I'll let you handle the first and the third. Because I want to be honest as well and tell you that, you guys, forty years in banking, I I worked with investments a lot, brought a lot of people in, managed investments. And when I saw how much we were paying on our debt, I knew we could earn more than that in an investment. So I got pretty excited and I probably spoke before I should have in terms of, why don't we invest it in the sixty forty portfolio, sixty percent stocks, forty percent bonds, we could earn two or three percent on average more than what we're paying. And so we're making more money. And we did a lot of research when people brought to my attention that you're, there's some really severe restrictions that municipalities are allowed to invest. We basically can only put the money in like a money market fund or government securities, you know, it has to be very safe. And most of that was under one percent at the time we were talking about. It's come up a little bit since then. So that was my not total understanding of how municipalities are allowed to invest. I learned that. So basically, the way they're going to be invested, when we want to give this money to a third party that'll manage it, pay down debt according to the schedule on that handout that you you have. And they will earn some money on it as well, but it'll all be very safely invested in government bonds and that sort of thing. No, no stocks, no even bonds from companies, because there's risk that they may not be paid. They'll be very safe investments. And over time, we may get some good returns on that. Right now, they're they're relatively low. With that, I'll turn it over. Paul, anything I said you want to correct, go ahead and if you can talk.
No, 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 no. I think, I mean, well, we just had to have the legal opinion. I mean, going back to the sixty forty, I know Council President Winarski, Council President Winarski had brought that up before and, you know, looking at the third class city code, Teresa Stankovich and I had talked about it. We just, you know, we had to get that legal opinion. And I know Ed spent a lot of time from last June or July when we first brought that up to when, you know, he was talking to people down in Harrisburg. But it it just is the, unfortunately, for the sixty forty, sixty forty portfolio, the law is the law, unfortunately. So no, you're, everything you said is spot on. Now, Liz, I guess I'll go to number three first, about outside parties. And why is my thing video? Okay. I don't know what, sorry, Frank. I'm sorry, Frank. I'm doing something wrong, aren't I?
No, you're okay.
Okay, we do, as part of the whole refunding and repayment plan, yes, we have to have an outside third party do what is called a verification report. So since Susquehanna Group had worked on this stuff for us back in the fall, they work on, they they'll work on the verification report as an outside accounting firm and you'll see there where they're going to get a bill for about thirty five hundred dollars for doing all this work. And they also put together along with Nick Falgione, our underwriter at PNC Bank for the last twenty years, they put together these bond schedules. So, you know, the third party does the verification report. And then after they get finished with the verification report, we have to have bond counsel, which Ed, Ed Betz, our solicitor, and Tim Senate from Knox Firm, who's done, you know, the work on the city bonds forever, they'll take that verification report and make sure that everything in the verification report numerically falls under what the ordinances should say properly. And they deal back and forth with D C D down in Harrisburg. And so you, you as a group in the next, next council meeting or two council meetings, you know, I was, I told the mayor, hopefully March, but I don't know if that's doable. But according to Tim and Ed, by the beginning of April, we should have ordinances for council to read saying that we're going to, you know, we're going to escrow this money with our paying agent and we'll just ship the money off to the bank in New York, who's been the city paying for probably four years or so. But and then to also back up on the whole issue of the paying agent and what the mayor's talking about, how we're going to give this money to the third party, I think council is pretty much aware that as we refunded bonds in nineteen and seventeen and fifteen eleven, this type of transaction happened each one of those times also where we refunded bonds. So our paying agent right now has, and I I could get to the number, but millions upon millions of dollars in in the Bank of New York's bank account that they use on an annual basis to pay the people that are bondholders. So and then backing up what the mayor was talking about, the prepayment, you know, the prepayments all go based on what interest rates are and what, you know, what interest rates that the bondholders have at that point in in time. So we're going to do it the best we can. Callable bonds will be paid off when they can be called and other bonds will be paid off at the most advantageous time. It'll all be in the verification report and it'll all be okayed by bond counsel.
I could lose to answer your questions.
That that is great. And my other, this isn't a question, maybe it's a question more of a comment. It seems to me that, again, as you said, you know, no guarantee that we won't raise taxes, but a very good faith effort to to do that should be really helpful in terms of, you know, marketing housing, you know, marketing companies to come here. I just, what what an amazing message to be able to convey that we haven't been able to do before. I think if we could only get reform at the state level in terms of education funding, because we we know that, you know, I think our highest property tax bill is for the school district. We'd be really sitting pretty. So maybe, maybe that's another area where we can do some advocacy and because, Mayor, I know that one of your your pillars for the for the city is also talks about, you know, world class education. I'm not sure. I might not be repeating it accurately, but to be able to twin those things, you know, the school district is investing in in its buildings, it's right sized. I think for the first time, we're kind of on the same page in terms of livability for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And, you know, with Lerta as well, I mean, this should be a very attractive place for businesses to come and people to come to. So. Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ed.
Question I have again is, I'm going to get it from the folks when I go to church. No tax increases, but sewer, water, garbage, all those increases on the books already?
Typically, those expenses go up two or three percent a year. And historically, what the city has done is put it off, put it off, put it off, and then do a much larger tax increase. I would prefer, like the Water Authority does, cover expenses every year, raise it one, two, three percent, whatever's needed. That's what I'll be recommending to you, but obviously you guys have the final word in terms of what what we're going to do.
As long as we stay, yeah, as long as we stay transparent about it, that's the key. Because, you know, most of these folks that complain are the ones that have two small bags that they put up by the streets. You know, we had four boys, we had four, four big cans.
Yeah, yeah.
It's unfair from that standpoint.
Look what's happened to the price of gas in the last three or four months here. It's gone from like two forty nine up to two ninety nine. You know, what's that about a twenty percent increase or?
Exactly.
So those expenses go up every year. What the budgets we present to you will show you the amount we need to increase the payment by in order to cover the increase in expense, nothing more than that.
I have noticed that the folks, if they see that we're using the money wisely, they complain a little bit, but they say that's the cost of doing business. So if we maintain that transparency, we may be better off.
In the long run, it's better, it's better for them as well, because when we put off doing it, there's more expenses that build up and we end up, if we wait three or four years to increase, we're going to do it much more than, it would go up much more than what if if we'd done it a little bit every year like that. So I feel strongly about that. But again, it's council's decision, once we, when we send a budget to you, which are good to do.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Other questions? I'd also be interested to know how you all feel about what we presented today.
Hello, Mayor.
Hi, Jim.
Hi there. A question. Every year we have paving money set aside. Where are we going to find that in the next five years per se? I think we're covered for this year, maybe possibly twenty twenty two. But that's been a very expensive and a never ending expense we have.
Yeah. And that's a good question. And to be honest, that's something we're well aware of and we're working on. I don't want to raise tax for, because I don't want to raise taxes for that. And we don't have the answer for you today, but obviously when we present budgets, we will. That's something we are working on.
Okay.
Another possibility with that is if we don't need the whole fifteen million to pay, you know, to balance budgets for the next five years, that's something we may need use some of that for as well. But again, that's off in the future. That's not a decision we're making today.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Good question.
I have a question. I know it's, of course, we're way, way past that point, but I keep on getting questions from people saying that, you know, what's comparison over the thirty years? I know you've brought this, you know, this analysis to twenty thirty, but to twenty fifty is a thirty year prepayment of the lease. I mean, I keep saying, keep hearing, hearing from people in their judgment, this was not a great deal. I know we're past that point, so it's probably doesn't make sense to even ask the question now, but my, I just want to be able to inform the public about the the approach to the year two thousand fifty, you know, I'm kind of getting that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I said about, you know, we're putting seventy eight point seven million to pay down debt. That buys us the five years to continue to grow revenue. But also the payments that we will not have to make over the next forty years totals eighty six, a little over eighty six million dollars. So for about seventy nine million dollars, we're avoiding eighty six million dollars in future expenses. And I can tell you that if we don't need all that fifteen million and if we've, if we're bringing people and jobs to Erie growing revenue, we'll probably pay down more debt with some of that fifteen million, most likely. That's what I'm really hoping happens. And again, I can't promise anything. I'm not trying to promise anything. I'm just going to tell you my way of thinking about it right now, what we're trying to achieve.
It kind of just tells us we need to work on those opportunities because, you know, we know what's going to happen, but the harder we work to make more economic development happen and more development happen, it could come true and hopefully the scenario would be even a better scenario if we go forward.
Yeah, hopefully. That's, that's the reason we keep funding Chris Groner and his work. You know, we gave him four million dollars, I think about two years ago because he was out of money. And this additional two million dollars is specifically to to fix up a couple of spots that are in terrible shape right now, but that are great locations for businesses. So that when a business comes and looks at Erie, there are spots they can start building on. They don't have to do all kinds of work to get them ready to build and spend a lot of money doing that. And any other questions on anything?
Michael, question?
Can't hear. Michael, you muted. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I have to take more time to digest the numbers before I make a comment.
That's fine. And certainly if you want to talk to me, call me anytime on my cell phone. I'll be happy to talk to you about it. We can get Paul involved. You know, whoever you're comfortable with, Kathy Rosnick and Renee have been very involved in this whole process too. So you notice, I'm happy to talk to anybody, but you can also talk to others if you prefer in the group here.
I just had one other observation, which is that, you know, back to Jim's question about paving. This probably wouldn't qualify, but I do know that the Biden administration is determined to pass an infrastructure bill with bipartisan support. I was just glancing at a New York Times story, which, you know, under the previous administration, infrastructure week became kind of a standing joke. But so I'm just thinking that there probably wouldn't be money in there just to come and, you know, pave West Eighth Street or something, but maybe those state highways that run through Erie or something. There's just, I think that there's reason to be optimistic about a lot of things. And I know with, you know, the great job that that your offices are doing in terms of grants, I I just think that though, you know, we have to be forward looking. Not only as it relates to the city budget, but other potential opportunities out there. So again, I'm no expert, I'm not an expert on finance, I'm not an expert on transportation, but I've been trying to follow what's happening under, you know, secret, I guess we call him Secretary Pete now instead of Mayor Pete. So.
Yeah. You know, another thing that we implemented three years ago is our full time grant writer, who I think brought in about five point two million dollars to the city last year in grants. And that's something that we continue to focus on and anything, any grants we can get that would help bring more businesses to Erie, we will, we will be doing that as well. That's a, that's a major focus for us. Now, I don't want you to feel rushed. I'm excited about this. So if I have a tendency to sound like I wanted yesterday, I apologize. I I want you to have enough time to understand it and be convinced when you vote that this is the best thing for the city. So we will put it on your agenda when you're comfortable. You know, inside, I want it on your agenda in two weeks, but again, we're not going to force it on you. Please let us know when you, the sooner we can do this, I think the better in terms of the impact of it. But it's up to the seven of you when you want it on your agenda. And please let us know as soon as you're ready to vote on it.
Mayor?
Yes, Kathy.
Yeah, the only thing I would, I would add, of course, to all of that is, goes back to, I think, Jim and Liz's questions. The the approach that we're going to take to better attack the structural deficit, as was described, will be to follow our E I P plan. There are a number of recommendations in there and and some we we support and and will move forward with and research further. Some we we feel like the the city is already doing a good job at. But that is, that's really the plan. And in the executive summary, and I'll send you, I kind of pulled that table out of what their suggestions were, what we needed to do over the next two or three years. That's really what we're going to be following to to try to attack the structural deficit. It it's meant to help offset the cost of things like paving. There's recommendations in the E I P on ways that the city could look at how to, how to pay for streetlights, which would free up liquid fuels funding that could then go to paving because right now it's going to pay for the electric to keep the streetlights on. But I just want to kind of direct you to that plan and know that we're, we have been working the plan. There's seventeen recommendations that have already been accomplished or or they're in progress. And we've got, there's the mayor. But we're, that's essentially our roadmap for the next five years of how we close that structural deficit that that you see. And so I think it's a good plan. And also to go back to Liz Allen's comment about the school district, they also have a financial recovery plan that we need to support them following and implementing so they can reduce their their expenses and increase their revenues and get people to to come back to the city. So I'll send the 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 updated chart from the executive summary of the E I P plan to you after this call. So you have it. And we'll continue to update you on the progress of implementing that plan.
And Kathy, do we go for the next phase, the stamp program too on this, or are we? Isn't it called stamp? I don't know what the acronym is.
It's called stamp now, and I think it's better than E I P. It flows off the tongue a little bit easier as stamp. But we did get the phase two funding for the code enforcement software.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Now, once that's spent, we can go back to it for other things in the E I P plan. And I've already got those noted in our schedule of what we're going to go back for.
You did tell me that. I just forgot. So thank you for reminding me.
That's available to us for the next four years now. So and we're going to continue to go back to it every time that we need it.
Thank you.
Kath, I have a question or maybe just a, I don't know, even a question. I know that in different states, as folks get to a certain age, I know that in different states, as folks get to a certain age, they get a break on their taxes. Texas does that as an example. When you hit 65, the older you get, the percentage of your taxable tax income on your house goes down. I know it's not our job to do it, but I'm wondering if we could tickle Mersky and all those guys and see if there's something that could be done that way. They're throwing money all over the place now. They should maybe think about the folks who are sitting on a fixed income, knowing that they're going to have to pay more to make their city better. But a lot of those folks are really, really pinching pennies to make that happen. So we, we have to look at all different ways. I don't know, has that been broached at all in any meetings you've been to, Kathy?
We've not discussed that. I think what you're referring to is, is the state income tax that is collected.
No, no, I'm talking about the.
Property taxes.
Property taxes.
There is a Pennsylvania property tax rebate. And it's, if you just Google Pennsylvania property tax rebate, it's for eligible Pennsylvanians, 65 and older widows and widowers, 50 and older, and people with disabilities, 18 and over. The income limit is $35,000 a year for homeowners and $15,000 annually for renters. Half of social security income is excluded. Anyhow, the maximum standard rebate is $650, with supplemental rebates for qualifying homeowners can boost rebates to 975. And I'm not doing this to be a show off, but I, I was walking with a friend yesterday who just happened to mention that another friend was applying for this. So it may be something that people are not aware of. Maybe it would be possible to put a link on the city website to the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue as people are getting ready to pay their property taxes. And one of the things my friend stressed or that she had, and as I just read from the site, is that in determining what your income is, it's half of what you're getting from social security, not the whole amount. So you learn something new. Well, I don't know if it's every day, maybe every other day I learn something new, so.
You know, there, there are a lot of opportunities to either reduce expenses or get additional income. For instance, yesterday or the day before, I think Paul, Lisa in your office may be aware that the county asked us to submit what our total expenses were with COVID-19 and how much we had been reimbursed, and our expenses are much higher than what we've been reimbursed. We don't, now, we don't know why they asked, but I don't know why they'd ask unless they have some more money to give. And so we're taking advantage of every opportunity like that and to, to bring more money. And we've got this new bill down in Washington DC. It's almost $2 trillion. It's like 1.8 trillion or something like that. And the, you know, the, the House has passed it, the Senate, I believe, is beginning today. It sounds like they've taken some things out that shouldn't have been in there in the first place, from what I've heard on the news. But there's got to be money that, from that, that's going to trickle down to cities as well. And believe me, we'll take advantage of every opportunity to bring in additional revenue that we, that we can, that we have available to us. And anything you guys know about, you want to recommend to us, please feel free to do that.
Melvin, you haven't said anything. Do you want to make a comment at this time?
I'm glad to be in America. No, you know, I, I, I'm happy with the presentation. I'm pleased with the presentation. And I want to thank Liz for her questions, because she, she usually come up with good questions that doesn't even enter my mind. So it's always a learning process when she does her research. I thank you for that very much, Liz. I think the administration is doing a very good job. They're doing their homework before they make a presentation to us. And that's what we've been asking for all the time, be part of the planning system. And I appreciate that very much. Before I end, I've showed some folks this, and how about that?
That's Kathy Schoff in the bottom left corner there.
That's right.
Right next to his heart.
That's right. There you go. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. By the way, what Kathy Rosnick talked about there, if you had wanted to talk about that during this meeting, she was prepared to do, to do that. And it, it basically is, you know, from that five-year plan, it's this section, I don't know if you can even see that. But these were recommendations that they made almost by year to us in terms of what we should be doing to bring our finances under control. And that's what Kathy has updated, show you the progress we're making and, and what we're working on. So that's what she'll be sending you, and that certainly is very good for you to review as well. If you want to talk to us about that, we'll be happy to do that at your convenience.
I want to thank you, Mayor Joe, for your great presentation. I am supportive of this financial endeavor. Thank you to your team, Paul Lichtenwater, Lisa Gomersall, and all in the finance office who had put forth a lot of effort. At this time, Paul, we'll go to you now.
Okay, now, the, the report we sent out last night or yesterday afternoon is really only the summary report. Because with the numbers just being completed by Monday and, you know, revenues, Kaz's office hasn't got a chance, you know, with it being the third today and the second yesterday, to get everything put into the books of record. You know, I, I'll mention the word timing probably 20 times today when I start talking about some of the different, different revenues and expenditures, but, and hopefully everyone's got a chance to look at this thing. But right now, you know, it, it seems as though, when you look at the first page, which is Page Two, the general fund, it looks as though, you know, we're $5 million behind where we were last year. But the biggest thing is, we had a couple bucks extra in the bank this year, so we haven't taken over $3 million of operating transfers from, you know, the water and sewer and refuse departments and move those into the general fund. So that's a big, a timing issue. When, when we get the complete book out, you're going to see, and Ed Williams has spoken a couple times on the Thursday meetings and also when we get together on Tuesdays, the tax collections, real estate tax collections are lagging a little behind. But we also have to remember, we pushed back the, the discount due date a little bit. So it's something that we actually expected to have happen. When, when you get your full book, the, the big one is, and I know it's only two months, so it's hard to say, but income tax and our special levy collections are up about $100,000 last year compared to this year. So I think that's a good thing. You know, people making a little bit more money, and we'll have to see. And as the mayor said, well, you know, when, when we put together the, the mid-year report last year, and we, you know, we, we had about a $3 million deficit. Every month we got together, we'd look at those, we, myself and council, we'd look at those special levy and income tax numbers, and every month I'd say, wow, it, it just doesn't make any sense because the income tax collections were right on pace with where they should have been. So, you know, we monitor that every day. We talked to Bill Leonard out of Berchheimer, and he's on top of things. So income tax collections are up a little bit. So I think that's, you know, that's a good thing for us. Going back to Page One, franchise fees are about the same as they were last year. Licenses and permits and traffic fines, everything is kind of floating around where it was last year. Reimbursements way down, $600,000 down. But as we all know, that, you know, most of the reimbursements are when the state feels like sending us a check. So last year, they made us send us a check for the winter service agreement in February, and this year we may get it in March. So that's all timing. Those are things that come in every year. So it's just a matter of when something's going to come in and when it's not. General Fund, I think the expenditures, one of the things to look at, the very first line item, that line item A, salary and wages, looks to be about half a million dollars better this year than last year. That, that's just, again, another timing issue. Last year, we, what we call the big payroll or the little payroll. Our big payroll is our police fire management and Ask Me employees, and that's usually a couple million dollars a month. Our little payroll is our Teamsters, and that's usually a couple $300,000, not a month, yet. So it, it, last year we had more of the big payroll as opposed to little payroll this year. But looking at the line C and D, the supplies and services, you know, a good thing, we, we had a much worse winter this year than last year, and we're down a little bit in spending. So you'll see that again when, when we get the, the big 400,000 book compiled, that over time, in the streets department and municipal garage are going to be up a little bit just because they did more plowing this year in January and February than they did last year. Besides that, the, the highlights I want to hit there, I mean, now it's really about it, the highlights. I mean, we're only done with two months, so it's really difficult to, you know, to get a handle on where things are right now. And then going to the second page, the sewer revenue fund. You know, city charge, line M in the revenue, city charges are up a hair. Just a lot of that has to do with the timing of when, you know, when people pay and when the bills go out. And again, they're the same thing. You know, it looks as though we're, we have, we have a million, $1,000,000 net revenues over expenditures this year as opposed to a negative last year. But last year, we made the transfer out of the sewer fund because the sewer fund had some money and the general fund needed money. So, you know, timing of when things happen, because we still plan on taking that transfer sooner or later. Hitting the refuse fund, and we, we talked about this a lot in the fall, where it looked as though the refuse collections last fall were lagging behind where they'd been the year before. But I kept saying that was timing, and it was due to the way the Water Authority was sending out those bills. And it finally caught up with us in January. You can see that the refuse collection for this year.
After 11 and a half years, I know where he's.
About $1.3 million versus $1.1 million.
Excuse me, Paul. Excuse me, Paul. Excuse me, Paul. Mr. President, please mute your mic. All right, sorry.
Okay, so yeah, that, that's just a matter of the way, the way the Water Authority was sending out those bills. So it finally caught up to us. So where it looked as though we, we didn't have a good year collecting refuse bills, we, you know, we're, we're going to make up that money this year. And, and I don't know if council's aware of this, talking about, as we talked about 15 minutes ago, about President Brzezinski asking about the, you know, getting up of the, the state legislators working on something, and then Liz, you backed it up with some of the information you knew with, you know, giving seniors or giving people a break on their real estate tax bills. We have an ordinance in place for senior citizens or anybody that has a PACE card that you can get a 10% discount on your refuse bill each year. And I don't know if anybody knew that, so that, you know, if, if citizens ask you about that, it's just, you know, something to know. And then the rest of the funds, I mean, golf, we haven't really opened yet. You'll, you'll look at the golf fees while they're $38,000 behind because we weren't able to have Customer Appreciation Day in January like we did last year. So we're going to do that the second half of the month of March and the first half of, the first week in April. So that'll catch right back up where it normally is with the sale of memberships, because I've received probably 20 calls over the last two or three weeks about what we're going to do with Customer Appreciation Day. And then the other funds, again, liquid fuels, capital improvement, risk management. Nothing really much to report until you see the full book in, you know, the full book. So I, I'll, we'll get that out once Kaz and Ed get everything into the computer for us. We'll do all of our adjusting entries, put everything together, you know, send that book out to you. Anybody that wants to ask any questions, I'll be available at the evening meeting, council meeting in a couple weeks, and then we can go from there. If you have any questions outside, obviously send me an email or call me up at any time.
Sounds good.
Does anyone have any questions for Paul?
Could you go over that again, Paul?
The whole thing? Okay.
I'm just teasing you.
Hey, and I did, the mayor brought up a good point, and I'd like to, I'd like to even expand on the mayor's point a little bit earlier. When he was talking about the projections for the MMO and the pension projections, where in 2029, we're going to see, you know, that $5 million per year decrease. Don Becker, when he did those projections for us, and I know we all got a copy of it, it's probably, you know, sitting at home on the desk somewhere. But the second big jump or nosedive in the MMO projections is going to happen in 2031. And that's because most of the amortization corridors that we use on, on the interest rate assumptions, those things are all going to be gone by 2033. And we're going to go, Don's projecting, you know, if, if we can hit our 6% number for the next, the next 10 or 12 years, which 6% is a pretty low number for what these pension plans and trees, you can speak to that, what they actually return us. Our, our, our assumed MMO in 2033, and I know a long time out, 10, 12 years out, is only going to be about $15 million. So, you know, we're sitting at $30 million with all funds at this point in time, and we're going to have a, a $5 or $6 million decrease in 2029. But then a few years after that, it's going to go down even more. So what we're looking at 12 years from now is our MMO pension payment is going to be about half of what it is right this minute. So the steps everybody took, you know, changing those actuarial assumptions somewhere in the future are really going to bear fruit for us. Now, it's just a statement. I don't know if it means anything, but.
Paul, when I.
I really do.
I'm looking at this presentation from the mayor. I'm kind of anticipating comments we're going to get from the public. And I think one of the comments is going to be, are we just throwing that 15 million, 15 million up in the air and wonder if it's going to get dwindled down before we know it, or how, you know, what kind of, what kind of protections can we tell the people about?
Well, the protections are, it's been appropriated into fund balance. So it's, I mean, it's in a general fund bank account, but it cannot be spent without councilmatic approval. And the, the projections are, we're going to need that money to appropriate into each, into the annual budgets over those next four or five years. So I, I, I mean, if, if, if the finance department were to come down to council next month and say, we want to buy $15 million worth of new computers, well, that would not be, you know, obviously council at that point in time would say that's a bad idea. So, so the protection, Ed, is you guys have, have to approve how that money's being spent. And the mayor has given, the orders the mayor gave me was to appropriate that money into the fund balance, so it can only be used for general fund, and that's what this document says, and that's what, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, Mayor, I'm sorry, but that's what the mayor's plan is. That's, that is what his plan is. There's no, no.
All right, I'm just playing devil's advocate as usual.
Yeah, and the bottom line of what Paul just said is, we can't do anything without council's approval with that money. So you're going to approve what we do with it.
So let me ask you one more question then. Why don't we just leave that 15 in with the 78?
Well, if we.
Go ahead, Paul, go ahead.
If we put that 15 in with the 78 and gave it to our bond paying agent. If we put that 15 in with the 78 and gave it to our bond paying agent, then we could never take that money back out. It would be, it would be spent and we'd, we'd use it to defees more bonds, yes. But that would not help us in this five-year projection, this five-year pro forma revenue expenditure report. That would help us somewhere out. I mean, that, that 15 million, if you add up the debt service in those years, it would help us in 2026, 27, 28, 29, 30 and the like, but it wouldn't help us now. Where we're trying, the mayor's trying to put together a program that those eight years from now, that's when the help is needed.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for the questions.
I, um, thank you, Paul and your team for all that you do. I know it's hard, like you said, because this is only March 3rd and we have our finance meetings at the first of the month. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for presenting today and being with us. Liz, you have
I'm raising my hand. I'm wondering with your comment about it being the first of the month, would, since we're looking at, study sessions, caucus, you know, agenda setting sessions, might it make sense to move the finance committee meeting to the second meeting of the month? Just something to think about. Um, I would ask, you know, not right now, but maybe Paul could, uh, let us know if that makes more sense um, in terms of when the books are closed and everything.
Can I add to that, Liz? When I first started 15 years ago, because of the timing issue of getting everything in the books of account closed, we would have the finance committee meeting the first morning of the month. But we didn't actually talk about the month before. We actually talked about the last set of books that were closed. So today's books that I would show you would be the January books. I just started about five years or so ago, you know, having Brian King, you know, close the, the book of record for that month and we'll print it out. And, and you know, always with the caveat, there's a lot of things that aren't in these, in these records yet. You know, that the timing of it, when you get the final book next week or the week after, that book will show the actuality of what happened. What I'm giving you is three, four, five days from, you know, Ed and Kaz's, what they call leave the window open. That, yeah, but to answer your question, yes, I mean, if we had at the second meeting of the month, the only problem is, I mean, even for me to go through at that point in time, I have much more information to give you. I mean, do you, I mean, if everybody wants to come down at six, six, 6:30 and listen to me drone on for an hour, we can do that.
Right. We, it's just something to think about. Um, I don't think, I don't think there's a decision to be made today, but I just, it just hit me that we're always, you know, feeling like we're a little behind, but maybe it's more, um, maybe if you go back to when you, the way you used to do it and could let us know, you, what kind of questions council asked then that would be helpful to us since we're in a training mode, frame of mind, so.
Well, the bad thing there is you're, you're, I mean, you'd be looking at the January numbers. I mean, you're five weeks behind at this point in time. So that, so that was a big thing. And then Kath, I know you were going, you were, can I ask a question? And I, I, I guess I'm going to back up the mayor's question, but because I'm working, working with the bond underwriters and the accounting people and, uh, the, you know, the financial advisors and two different bond councils and trying to get this thing moving forward. I guess, and I know everybody on council talks to each other all the time via text or email or, uh, actual phone conversations. I guess the sooner somebody could let me know to get moving forward on all this stuff, the better. Cause again, I have three different angles I'm working with to get this, this thing moving.
So you would like to put it on the agenda, um, if you have enough support, of course, as soon as possible.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Paul, this, this just requires one vote. Am I right about that?
Well, Ed, Tim, Tim, Tim said it seemed to think because there, there's going to be some ordinances involved. They take double votes. So that's all right. You know, that's why I told you the other day, if Tim and Ed and Jay and Nick got their stuff over to Tim and Ed. And I mean, I think March 17th is a little too quick, but April, the, the first meeting in April is not until the 7th. So Liz, in that case, by the first meeting of April, I'm going to have good numbers for council. I mean, you know, because it's so far into the, you know, you're done with a whole week at that time. So we're looking at the first reading of getting this stuff done. You know, at that point in time, and then the second reading would be the 21st. And then we'd shush the money over to the bank in New York on the 22nd and all this stuff would be defees.
So maybe we just kind of look ahead and if there looks like, you know, I haven't looked, I don't have my calendar right. I have it on my phone, but you know, if there's some other times where our first meeting of the month is going to be the first or the second or the third, maybe we say, hey, let's, let's move it to the night meeting. I mean, we, because we're flexible on that. Kathy has moved meetings to the night before. So just
Remember, we have those, excuse me, we have those Tuesday nights open in the event we need them. So that'd be an excellent time to, to do that. If we run into that, that time crunch. Good idea. Kath, anything else?
No, um, we can, uh, put our words into Lori. Lori can, uh, express. But, uh, sounds good to me. Thank you so much. And I like Liz's opinion of, um, you know, how definitely flexible and flowing. If I've learned anything in life, you have to be flexible and flowing.
It looks like there would be four, just real quick, I think June, uh, September, November and December, we have early, uh, first meetings of the month. So, and maybe we move that June meeting even, uh, if there's support for Ed's suggestion. So again, I just scrolled through my phone really fast. I might've missed a month. So thanks, Kathy.
Oh, good.
Well, and we'll still attach along with when you get the full 100-page book, you know, the notes I always give on why this thing moved that way and this thing moved the other way. I mean, we'll still attach that stuff. So, I mean.
Thank you. Paul, do you want to say anything about, uh, one summer meeting a month? Did you want to, um, make a comment?
Get the feeling of a board, maybe, maybe we'll, yes, see what the mayor thinks too.
Well, from, from our perspective, and I, I could haul Andrea down the hall to have her talk to that. But it could be, I mean, I don't know if the feeling of council's one meeting a month, I mean, you know, who am I to
Well, we're looking for input.
Well, from our perspective, it, you know, with contracts and purchase orders, it could be a little dicey. Um, you know, because sometimes things have to get through. And I know that, and here comes Andrea now, and she's going to probably, I, I know that if, if it's something finance committee or finance department related, I'm going to call Kathy. And I don't have my liaison sheet in front of me, so I don't know. And upper right-hand corner, Mel, I don't know who you are, Liz, who you are. I mean, if you're, you know, when I, Public Works or Fire or whatever, I know that the chiefs or Dave Mulvihill will call you and tell you, hey, we've got something going on agenda. Is it okay? You know, but you still have to have the vote and you still have to approve everything, even with me calling Kathy and going, finance department's wanting to do this. So I, here's Andrea. I'm going to get out of the way and let her talk to it. But it is a little dicey from your perspective. But if council, you know, if council wants to do it, I guess we're all for it.
Okay. So I, I apologize. I just walked into the conversation. Um, so what do we?
I threw out an idea.
Only in the summer.
Yeah. July, I just threw that out because other councils do that around the country. Things normally slow down, but if it's going to be a problem, then we can forget about it. Again, just something for the good of the order. If we, instead of having the two meetings, have one meeting in June and July at the middle of the month.
Right, right. Um, I can see it. We could try it. That's the only thing I can, I can honestly say is trying it one month to see how that goes. Uh, but I know, um, especially this time of the year, everyone, when everyone gets their money in their budget, they're like, okay, what do we need? What do we need? What, what can you spend? You know, and then we have a lot of projects more in the summer because of the weather, obviously being able to do more projects because it's nicer weather out. So.
Maybe if you want to try it, maybe try it in July of this year. That gives four months notice. And we'll see if it causes any problems or not. It's totally up to council, totally up to council though, what you guys want to do.
Your input's important. Yeah.
I think it'd probably be a good idea to check with the department heads because like Andrea said, we're actually busy in the summer in a lot of our departments, um, even like Chris Broner with, you know, development projects. You know, summer is the building season. So whereas like the school board is slower because they're not in session. City's actually busier because that's development season. So I think it probably would be a good idea to check with the department heads and get their input.
That's what we're trying to do. Thanks, Ren.
Yep.
Madam Chair, uh, I think, uh, we can always call a special meeting if emergency, uh, come around.
Thank you. Let's, we'll take all of these things into consideration.
Yeah, just the top of the head. I already know like curb ramps, um, one, two, and three will be going on. And then there's, um, the paving and asphalt milling projects that they'll do also. So, um, but yeah, as long as, as long as, you know, we talk to Dave and Chuck and John in engineering to see what they think about it too.
And that would be for July too, I think.
Right.
Just, yeah, just one month. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for the input. Yeah.
If we don't have anything else to say, I think this would conclude our meeting. The sun is shining, the sky is blue. So have a great day.
Bye, everybody.
Hey, take care, everyone.